Questions from you to ask directly to her about her, you know, why she's interested in Charisetic and why she has such a beautiful singing voice, and why she's such a cute little lady. Anyway, without further ado, Rabbi.
Wonderful, thank you. So it's such a pleasure to be here. And for this study session, I wanted to kind of talk about something completely different from what I spoke about earlier. Is that better?
I told you.
Okay, great. For this teaching here, I wanted to take something that really has no connection to the parsha, has no connection to this wonderful commemoration of Rabbi Adler's yard site, but really is an issue that I think is present for many, if not all, of us. And so in many different contexts, you might at some point or another, maybe not, but you might at some point or another, find yourself in a position where you feel like you need to speak up against wrongdoing, speak up about something important. But you're not sure if what you have to say will really be listened to, or how to say something in order for a person to respond. And many of us, at least myself, maybe I'm projecting on all of you, but at least myself, sometimes feel like maybe we just shouldn't say anything because it's not going to do any good. So this feels like a very contemporary issue, but it's actually an issue that was dealt with in the Torah and an issue that was dealt with in the Talmud. So now that I've already got your attention and you don't have time to read the whole thing without me, if I could get some help passing these out.
That's why we're here.
Thank you. I want to bring you to, it says three source, oh gosh, actually it says two source number ones and a source number two. Well, there you go, I need a proofreader. But I want to read with you, it's kind of three sources, but it's really two with just a little bit in the middle taken out. So the first source comes from the Torah itself, from the book of Leviticus. And normally, I would ask for a volunteer from one of you to read this text so that we could hear it in a different voice with a different inflection, but I know it's important for people who couldn't be in this room today to still experience this, so I'm just going to go ahead and read the sources for today, but know that normally, I would want a little bit more engagement and participation. So in Leviticus 19, it says, "You shall not go about as a tale-bearer among your people; you shall not stand by the blood of your neighbor; I am the Lord. You shall not hate your fellow in your heart; you shall surely rebuke your kinsmen and not bear sin because of him. You shall not take vengeance, and you shall not bear a grudge against the children of your people, but you shall love your neighbor as yourself; I am the Lord." So you're probably familiar with that last piece, right? "You shall love your neighbor as yourself." But here, we really have three verses that we could probably spend about an hour studying each half verse at least. We're not going to do that today, don't worry. But it's also, in addition to each section of each verse being really interesting and important, the whole section kind of as one unit is also worth looking at. We're not going to spend too much time discussing this, I really want it just as an entree into what we're going into, but the things that are significant to point out, right? "You shall not stand by the blood of your neighbor." Okay, well, what does that mean? "You shall not stand idly by..." What does that mean in terms of our obligation to intervene when someone is in danger, when someone's life is at stake? How much do we have to put ourselves in danger before we say, "No, it's not upon me to save, and I will stand idly by." How does this apply not only to physical action, but also to political activism, also to our personal relationships with other people? So again, that could be a whole other conversation that we're not going to have today, but that's kind of at the background of this. And then the other very important mitzvah, right? These are all mitzvot, commandments. The important mitzvah that "you shall not hate your fellow in your heart, but you shall surely rebuke him; do not bear sin because of him, do not bear a grudge because of him." Right, so what does it mean to rebuke your fellow? And why is that nestled in among these commandments, to not bear a grudge and to love your neighbor as yourself? Again, that could be a whole discussion, we're not going to discuss that, but that's the important context and background for the next two sources, which if you will note, they're really, they're just one page apart from each other, they're really part of the same source, there's just kind of an intervening story in the middle that we're not doing today. So the text that I really want to study with you today is from the Babylonian Talmud, Shabbat, 54B, 55A. So first, we have kind of the legal introduction. I'm in the middle source on the page, it says, "Anyone who is able to protest against the members of his household when they are about to commit a sin and does not protest is culpable for the sins of his household. With regard to the members of his city, he is culpable for the sins of the member of his city; with regard to the whole entire world, he is culpable for the sins of the whole entire world." So this is a very dramatic, intense statement with a lot of high expectations from all of us. I do want to take a minute and kind of flush out this English translation. So the Hebrew reads, "Komi she'afshar limchot le'an she'be'to." This is the first sentence, "Anyone who is able to protest against the members of his household." But this word "micha," you can see a little footnote at the bottom of the source sheet, this word "micha" does not only mean to protest, it's one of these very rich words that's very hard to translate. It can mean protest against, it can mean forewarn, it can mean interfere, it can mean to try to prevent. So all very interrelated meanings, but with very different nuances and subtleties to what that actually means we're supposed to do. So with that in mind, I'm going to read the source one more time, and I want to hear from you when I'm done reading, what is it that this brings to mind for you? What is it that jumps out at you about this text? And also a bit of an emotional reaction, right? How does this text make you feel? So again, "Anyone who is able to protest against the members of his household when they are about to commit a sin and does not protest is culpable for the sins of his household. With regard to the members of his city, he is culpable for the sins of the members of his city; with regard to the whole entire world, he is culpable for the sins of the whole entire world." So what are your thoughts, reactions? Raise your hand if you don't mind, and I'll bring the microphone over to you.
Rabbi, the first thing that struck me was it's the opposite of if you save a life, you've saved the whole world. So if you've done something where you didn't save a life, then you're responsible for the sins of everybody else.
Wonderful. So Karen here is alluding to another very well-known teaching from the Mishna, that anyone who saves a life, it's as if he's saved an entire world, right? Because it's not just that person, it's all the future generations, and this is the flip side of that. If you stand by while someone's life is lost, it's as if you have been responsible in some way for that loss. Beverly, and then we'll get to you.
It seems to me that this is urging people to take on responsibility, not looking to God to deal with these things, but individual responsibility to deal with, to right wrong and to right around them, in their home first, then in the community, and then it even goes to the entire world. So to me, that's also a metaphor for how we deal with problems. First, take care of yourself, then we deal with the neighbor, or shall we say, and then the latter.
Wonderful. So two main points there. Can you guys hear me without the microphone? Great, I'll try and speak very loudly. Two main points there. One, the point about who is responsible for taking care of things? Do we just rely on God, or is it us? And that's actually going to be very important for this next section, so we'll hold on to that thought. The other piece is about these kind of concentric circles, right? Circles of responsibility, that who are we responsible for? Who are we responsible for first and foremost? Ourselves and our families. And then it goes out from there. So ultimately, we are still responsible for the entire world, but we're far more responsible for our families, for our communities, for our city, et cetera, before then. So two wonderful points, and then I think we have another comment. Did you have a comment? Excellent.
I was interested in the parenthetical comment, when they are about to commit a sin, as opposed to what do you say after they've committed the sin. It seems almost like, is it telling us to say something before, maybe not say something after?
Right. So absolutely. So just a quick note about why that's in a square bracket. It is not in the exact text, it is implied both from the text itself and from the context, so for ease of understanding, right, that's really my own insertion there, but I don't think that that is contrary to the text, right? I think that that really is what is naturally, organically implied in the text, and I think that that is part of the point right now, is that after someone's done something, it's a little too late to speak up against it, right? And if we go back to the source from Leviticus, which we kind of breezed through, right? After someone has done something wrong, and you go and you call them out on it, well, maybe that will cause you to bear sin because of him, take vengeance, bear a grudge, right? That breeds bad blood, whereas if you can stop someone before they've done something, and of course, it still has to be in a respectful and healthy way, that actually minimizes kind of the negative energy within a community. So the timing certainly is important. Let's take two or three other comments, three other comments, because I see three other hands, and then we'll move on to the next source.
To me, how it resonates is the ethical responsibility of a bystander. If you're talking about the anti-bullying movement that you see right now, the trading bids or the just being bullied, then no, they have an obligation to speak out. And also, the obligation when there's discrimination within the society, given the fact that Jews, and we experience the Holocaust, what are responsibilities when other groups are being discriminated against, or there's a possible move to demonize, or otherwise persecute against certain groups?
Excellent. So kind of as I started this off, this kind of situation is very applicable in many different contexts today, and particularly related to this concept of being an empowered bystander, right? Someone who is not directly involved in a conflict of an issue, but needs to step in, whether that's with bullying, whether that's with discrimination, whether that's with any other of the numerous things that we face, I think really on a day-to-day basis. So we have two more comments, and then we're going to move on to the next source.
I wonder if with the concentric starting and moving out, is that, I mean, the values are taught at home, and if you have a family and you don't speak out to what's right and wrong, then those in the family don't learn. But if they do learn, then they apply it to where they're living, and then those who they've touched where they're living, it spreads out. So eventually, it applies to the entire world. So it's about teaching the difference between right and wrong at home, standing up for what's right, teaching those around you, then they can go out and do what's right in the community, and the community learns from that, and it affects the entire world.
Wonderful. So it's not just about concentric circles of responsibility, but the ripple effect that we have, right? That when you have a positive influence in a close relationship, like with a parent and child, or someone in your household, that then influences the greater community and keeps rippling out, having positive impact. Excellent. One last comment on this? Betsy had a comment? I think so.
There's actually some basis for this now in the criminal justice system, when you look at, "He is culpable for the sins of the members of the city." If somebody commits a murder, and somebody is at the door as a lookout person, they are as guilty as the person who commits the murder in the eyes of the law. So when you look at this, this was written so many years ago, and it's taken up now in the criminal justice system, that they're finding the culpability of the people that are involved, even if somebody did not pull the trigger.
Thank you. All right, we're going to have to, we're going to be able to stop running that microphone back and forth between me and everyone else, so that's wonderful. Thank you, Chazan. All right, so I want to highlight one other piece of this text that is very significant and really leads into the next piece, and that's this, in Hebrew, it's the third word, right? The first sentence, "Anyone who is able to protest..." "Komi she'afshar limchot." Well, that leaves a big question. What does it mean to be able to protest? At what point are you unable to protest? At what point do you still stand up for yourself, even if you think you aren't able? And I think that that is really the next, the question that really drives this next source. Like I said, this is all part of the same conversation, just one page later, a little bit of intervening stuff in the middle, but we get to the source that starts at the bottom of the page, we're going to slip to the back. And here, so often as we find in the Talmud, right, we've started with kind of a legalistic statement. Here is the, what you do. Anyone able to protest does so or is culpable. Great. Well, now we have a story, a story that complicates things a bit. Particularly, it complicates this word "afshar," possible. What does it mean for it to be possible to protest? So Rabbi Zera said to Rabbi Shimon, "Sir, you should rebuke the members of the house of the exile ark regarding that which they did." Okay, not important in the context, right? The house of the exile ark, which is the leader of the Jewish community in exile in Babylonia, did something wrong, what they did is not important, right? Now Rabbi Zera is telling Rabbi Shimon, "You also did something wrong by not rebuking them." Rabbi Zera to Rabbi Shimon, "You should rebuke the members of the house of the exile ark regarding that which they did." Rabbi Shimon says to Rabbi Zera, "They will not accept it from me." "Lo mekabli minai." They won't take it, they won't listen. Rabbi Zera says to him, "Even though they will not accept it, you should still rebuke him." For Rabbi Acha bar Rabbi Hanina said, "Never did a favorable judgment go forth from the mouth of the holy blessed one that was then retracted for an evil judgment, except for the following matter: As it is written, then God said to him, 'Go through the midst of the city, through the midst of Jerusalem, and mark a tav on the foreheads of the people who sigh and cry about all the abominations that are committed amongst them,' et cetera." Right, so this is the way the Talmud works often, is that everything will be linked to a verse in the Torah. Sometimes that verse actually says a lot about what's about to happen, sometimes it's just kind of a link, a way to make all of this connected to the original written Torah, and make that connection there. Basically, the point is Rabbi Acha, sorry, not Rabbi Acha, Rabbi Zera is saying, "There was one time, and one time only, when God gave a favorable judgment and retracted it for an unfavorable one." Now here's the story. "The holy blessed one said to Gabriel, the angel, 'Go and place a tav of ink on the foreheads of the righteous, so that the angels of destruction will have no power over them; and upon the foreheads of the wicked, place a tav of blood, so that the angels of destruction will have power over them.'" The attribute of justice, Midat Hadin, said before the holy blessed one, "Master of the universe..." What is the difference between these and those? The ones who are getting the tav of ink, who are fine, and the ones who are getting the tav of blood, who are going to be destroyed? "The holy blessed one said to the attribute of justice, 'These are completely righteous people, and those are completely wicked people.'" The attribute of justice said before the holy blessed one, "Master of the universe, it was within their power to protest, and they did not protest." "The holy blessed one said to the attribute of justice, 'It is revealed and known before me that if the righteous had protested against the wicked, they would not have accepted it.'" The attribute of justice said to the holy blessed one, "Master of the universe, if it was revealed to you, was it revealed to them?" And that's where the story ends. We know from the introduction, right, from the statement at the top of the page, that this is the one time God retracted a favorable judgment in exchange for an unfavorable one. We know that Midat Hadin, the attribute of justice, has just convinced the holy blessed one, that even though the righteous people would not have been able to influence the wicked people, they didn't know. And the fact that they didn't know meant that they had a responsibility to speak up, and the fact that they didn't do that means that they are deserving of the same unfavorable judgment as the wicked people. Very powerful story, very interesting story. We very rarely see Midat Hadin, the attribute of justice, which is normally considered part of God's being, right? We very rarely see the attribute of justice in conversation with God, God's self. So that alone is incredibly striking, and perhaps is cause to wonder, you know, is this kind of representative of that internal debate that we sometimes have within ourselves? Do I do this? Do I do that? Should I do one thing? Should I do the other? Here it is personified, or is Midat Hadin, the attribute of justice, something that exists in some ways separate from God and able to influence God as it seems to in this story? So that alone is a fascinating question, but in the interests of time, what I really want to focus on is kind of the main point of this story, that even if you don't, even if what you would say will not be accepted, even if that is known to God, it's never known to us, we can never know whether what we will say will be accepted or not, and therefore, we have an obligation to speak up. So I'm curious if there are responses to this. First of all, let's just start kind of on a gut reaction. What's your gut reaction to this text? Well, let's wait for the microphone, I forgot mine.
And the last part, where you speak up against a mom or a government, if you're alone, it could be harmful. And that's why it takes superb courage to stand up alone, unless you can get power with you to speak up.
Right, so this is scary.
By yourself.
Right, right. So the point is that there's a lot of fear, a lot of risk in standing up by yourself, especially if it's against a whole community, or if it's against someone with a lot of power. And I agree, my emotional reaction to this is, oh, God, right? This is overwhelming, this is frightening, it gives me a bit of a knot in my stomach, because it does seem to call us into that position of being afraid and standing up anyways for what we think is right, even if we are alone, even if it's against a whole community or someone of power. It's an overwhelming text in that sense, I believe. Any other?
I've tried to live my adult life by following the rules, all that is necessary with the tribal people, because nothing, and this is that said a different way.
Yes.
As Rabbi Wise said close a couple of weeks ago, it is better to be kind and right in many circumstances, but having you all stood up and hit them who come into power, you deal, you disappear, and the last is, the last is...
Great. We also have a comment from further in the row.
Just reminds me a little bit of, I think it's C.C. Hill, chapter 33, where he's addressing the watchman on the wall, and he says, "If you all see a sword coming, and you don't tell the people to prepare, I will bear demise on your head, if it is possible." So it's a really heavy, heavy thing.
Right. I'm going to broaden the question a little bit. At first, I was just asking for kind of gut reactions. Actually, how much time do we have? Let's think if this is a good idea. Five minutes? Okay. You know what, let's take, I thought, were there one or two more hands? We're going to take a few more comments on this question, and then I'm going to wrap up, just in the interest of time. Yes, microphone's on its way.
What are the boundaries, like she said, it's the woman in the front, about a city, you know, to alert a city about something, and if you could get a, what are the boundaries of yourself before you help somebody else, or try to protect somebody else?
Right. So the question, in case you can catch it, is what are the boundaries of risking your own well-being in order to protect others' well-being? And it is a difficult question to answer. It's one that is certainly taken up in the variety of texts, and certainly, you know, if we talk, remember, I started this out by giving you this verse about, "Do not stand idly by the blood of your neighbor." So in the legal codes, that question is taken up very much. If there is possible danger to your life, do you still have to step in? If there's certain danger to your life, no, right? If someone is drowning in front of you, and you don't know how to swim, do not jump in. But unfortunately, often it's not that clear, right? Often, it's not certain risk, often it's possible risk. And so that's where it gets more complicated, that's where, you know, there's a whole body of literature, and a body of literature that, you know, needs our voices today too, because it's in those unclear situations and those tensions that we have some of the most fruitful discussions. For now, to answer on one foot, it is, you know, you're not allowed to certainly risk your life, but when there's potential risk, it depends. Any last comments? Great.
I think the problem is that you never know when you speak out, who's going to hear you, and what would happen. So I think we have a responsibility to speak out when we see something that's not right being done, because one word from somebody can cause the next person to talk as well, and the next, and the next, and the next. And sometimes, that creates the situation where the act there can be stopped. So I think it is a responsibility, as the text says, for each of us to speak out, because we don't know
Right.
...who's going to listen to that, and what the consequences may be in stopping something that you are experiencing.
Wonderful. It actually reminds me of something that my grandfather always used to say, that the first person who tells you you should be doing something, you might not listen to them, the second person you might not listen to, the third person you might listen to, but you're only listening to them because the first and second person said something, right? And I think there's a lot of truth to that. All right, we'll take one last comment, and then I'm going to wrap things up.
I sort of go along with what Richard said. Sometimes, instead of rebuking the situation, you can offer information or facts that maybe the group doesn't really understand, or has it is lacking in doubt, so I think what Richard said is I go along with that. I think you got to provide more information.
Sure. So, you know, on that note, and, oh, is there one more? Great, one more. I'm a sufferer for this, I love hearing your wisdom, so I have trouble cutting you all out.
Whether we translate the Hebrew with protest or not, I think it makes a huge difference.
Mm-hmm, great.
If I'm right, that the curiarity of our kind is that we have an abundance of protesters, and the very, the kinds of guidance that was suggested by the immediately preceding Isaiah could, Isaiah could communicate a lot by walking naked through the streets of the city, because there was a set of normal norms that people understood that he was protesting shamelessness, and it referred them back to the norms and standards. We don't live in that time and time. If we walk, meet the synagogue today and see someone walking down the street, we will think that it's almost normal, and then we're a little odd. But we won't, at all understand what people understood when Isaiah walked naked down the street. So we need to adapt this teaching to the curiarity of our kind, and that gets us down into the dalets, a copy and how we interpret that word that you
Absolutely.
...heard it as, translated as protest.
Right. And I agree with you that what that word actually means is very significant, which is why I put the range of definitions on the bottom, because I wanted you to have that too. You know, there's always a fine line between readability, right? If I translate it as seven different things every time the word showed up, you'd have a hard time getting through the source sheet and understanding it, but also with providing kind of the range of opportunities for interpretation. And I do think it's important how we translate that word. I also think that it's an important conversation to have, one we don't have time for today, of even if we stick with the word protest, so what does protest mean? In our age, in our day, in our time, given our social norms, and given the cultural milieu that we live in, what does it mean to protest, right? This is clearly talking about protest that at least has a chance of having an influence. And so there are different ways of protesting, or forewarning, or interfering, or trying to prevent, whichever translation you use. So how does that actually play out in the real world today is a whole other conversation. You know, I'm leaving you with a lot of whole other conversations that we could have about this text, and in some ways, it's one of the things And in some ways, it's one of the things that I love about this kind of study, is that you've never completely exhausted a text. Even when you think you have, there's always more to talk about, always more to think about. And I hope that some of these questions will stick with you, right? Will get you thinking over the coming days, coming weeks, coming years. Because there is a lot of fruitful insight in this text. There's a lot of wisdom, and there is a lot that we need to recontextualize, redefine for us today. I want to leave you, though, on a slightly more positive note. Like I said, this text, at least for me, gives me a very large sense of being overwhelmed, of, oh, gosh. Well, first of all, is there an end to the things that I could protest? Right? I mean, we live in a world where there seems to be so much trouble and so much wrong and so much contention. Where do you even start? And we have some of that, right? Saying, "Start with the people who are closest to you and branch out." But even that, the lines of what's closest to you or not are blurred today, particularly with the internet and with the access that we have to other communities. So it's a very overwhelming text in that perspective, and the perspective of, okay, well, to what extent do I risk myself in order to try and help others? And it's an overwhelming text in the sense that even if I know someone is not going to listen, do I still have to speak up? Well, this text seems pretty clear, right? God knew they weren't going to listen, and still, God said, "Should have spoken up." Or at least, Midat Hadin said, and God agreed. So this is a very overwhelming text, and it can be a very daunting text. But I think that it's also an empowering text. And I want to bring us back to the very first source, this source in Leviticus, where I said, we have kind of three or possibly even six seemingly different statements, right? "Don't be a talebearer, don't stand idly by, don't hate your fellow," dot, 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 right? Point, 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 point. But these texts, these commandments, also come in a unit. And so I want to just take one second to look at these last two texts... Sorry, these last two verses, where it says, "You shall not hate your fellow in your heart; you shall surely rebuke your kinsmen and not bear sin because of him; you shall not take vengeance, and you shall not bear a grudge against the children of your people; but you shall love your neighbor as yourself." Right? And that, I think, is the key to all of this. Right? That is where some of that fear and overwhelming sense starts to dissipate, and we start to see the end goal here. Right? That really, you know, rebuke done in the way that Judaism envisions, protest done in the way that Judaism envisions, does not lead to a community of different people fighting with each other and yelling at each other and walking around the streets naked, even though nobody's paying attention, right? Rebuke and protest lead to a society where we all love each other as ourselves and treat each other in that way. That the ability to kindly and supportively say to someone, "I think that what you're doing is actually harmful, and maybe there's another way that this can be done," does not disintegrate community, but actually builds up community and creates that sense of mutual care, mutual responsibility, and a society where we all love our neighbor as ourself and can work together in that way.
You certainly kept me with several things right from the very beginning, I think, just to keep on going, and I'm sure many of us also. I hope that Ezra Lutz, you have a question about that. Rabbi Sarah will be here through tomorrow. She will be teaching tomorrow morning. I should be working on the kids in the Sunday School. And Nika Marv is at 6 o'clock tonight.
I think we have some time for a few last questions.
Oh, that's right. I told you to take over.
Well, I said, Karen, you're doing all the running. You should introduce the next segment, then I'll do all the rest. So, which, we are having questions. Rabbi Sarah's right, of course. Rabbi Sarah, if you haven't heard already, graduated, some of them, from Syracuse in vocal performance. You heard her sing today. But we're here to have her answer your questions. And so hopefully, somebody has her. There's one.
My boy graduated from Syracuse also. And when she was there, it was turning into a hotbed, a hotbed of pro-Palestinian activity. She formed the Students for Israel organization. How did you find Syracuse? What activities, if any, in that regard, did you go into?
To be honest, I found Syracuse mostly apathetic on all sides. When I was there, there wasn't a lot of any kind of political activism on Israel, on Palestine, on any issue, which in itself, I think, is a problem. These are things that we should care deeply about, and we should show that care. The one exception to that was that I was a student when Operation Cast Lead happened. And that certainly brought out some political activism, some anti-Israel sentiment, some pro-Israel sentiment. There was a pro-Palestinian protest scheduled on campus using the steps of what was supposed to be the Interfaith Chapel. And there was a lot of debate about how to handle it. I was on the board of the Hillel at the time. And we decided that absolutely, we had to do something to counter this. We had to do something that showed that we stood with Israel, that we loved Israel and supported Israel through this time. But we also did not want to create too much bad blood on campus. And so what we decided to do was to create a separate event in a different location, a rally in support of Israel, not just with the campus community, but with the entire Jewish community in the area, and show our support that way, try to divert some of the media attention away from the other protests and towards our rally in support of Israel and in support of the people there who were suffering. It went well. It was, I mean, it was planned very last minute, and given that, it was very well attended. There were a couple hundred people there, which Syracuse is not such a huge community that a couple hundred people is very good. And the response overall was good. And it also meant that we really did... One of the big successes is that we did succeed in not creating bad blood between different student organizations on campus. It didn't get contentious student to student, right? It was very clear that we had very... There were different groups of people with very, very different opinions. But that didn't eat away any of the positive relationships that we have in other contexts.
Rabbi, can you, over here...
Sorry, this is a bad voice.
Can you talk about the strategy of a rabbi now graduating from JTS on outreach for interfaith, daily interfaith couples? And how you see your role in addressing that going forward?
Sure. So in terms of the last part of your question, in addressing that going forward, I think the most important thing that we need to be thinking about, talking about, the most important question we need to be engaging in is, why be Jewish? Right? Let's set aside the question of why date Jewish, why marry Jewish. All of us, regardless of what relationship we're in, regardless of what stage of our life we're in, will benefit greatly from thinking about and answering this question, why be Jewish? What is the value in being Jewish? I think that if we are able to convince young people that there is a value in being Jewish and having a Jewish home, then the question of why date Jewish, why marry Jewish, that just kind of falls into place. Well, if I see a value in being Jewish and having a Jewish home, then I see a value in having a Jewish family as well. And so that, I think, kind of in the long term, is the most important thing that we can do. And I think that that addresses far more than just the question of interdating, intermarriage. In terms of welcoming interfaith families now, I think it's important that anyone who comes to me and says they want to be part of the Jewish community should be welcomed and embraced and included as much as possible, right? If they're taking that step to show the interest in being here, I have open arms. Now, that doesn't mean that there are no lines, right? There still has to be different ways of negotiating. For an example, you know, a non-Jew is not going to have an aliyah to the Torah, even if their family is integrally part of the community. So there are, you know, those questions of, well, exactly what does it mean to be welcoming and open? And how does that fit in with every aspect of the life of a community? But certainly, I think if someone, you know, expresses an interest in being part of a community, they're welcome, and we'll figure those other pieces out. And in terms of people who are intermarried and who are not taking that first step, I think it's worthwhile to reach out and to find out why. And if there is any interest in being part of a Jewish community and having a Jewish family, having a Jewish home, then to nurture and grow that interest.
I'm extending the question to the unaffiliated, to people who have become alienated or who are enthusiastic new age religion and are even averse to any affiliation. These are a large number of people, of course. And suppose, suppose you came here. The warmth hospitality felt was not just superficially marked out, but that the rapport with this congregation was deep and lasting. And then the board and the rabbi you're calling said to you, "Could you spend half your time, and do you have half your passion for those who are unaffiliated?" Could you then do that?
Could I? Absolutely. I mean, I think that... So you're talking about two very different groups. One is, sorry, outreach to the kind of apathetic unaffiliated, right? They're just not affiliated. They don't have strong feelings either way. They're just not coming, right? And another group is the ones who are averse to. So those are two very different groups and really take two different strategies. People who are just unaffiliated but have no strong feelings one way or another. A personal connection goes a very, very long way, right? Reaching out and saying, "Hi, I'm the new rabbi in town. I really want to get to know all of the community, not only the people who are already there. And could you come have a cup of coffee with me? Tell me what excites you, what interests you, what troubles you? You know, let's just talk." And then to find ways that the community is already providing for some of those needs and meeting some of those interests. And, you know, not just with one meeting like that, but with 20, 30 meetings like that. Okay, if I meet with 20 people and 15 of them have the same interests, well, there's a great opening for something the synagogue can be doing to draw them in. Drawing people in that way with personal connections, inviting people to a Shabbos table, a Shabbos meal, you know, and really reaching out in that kind of one-on-one way that makes people feel important. And everyone wants to feel important. In terms of the people who are kind of averse to Judaism, as you said, you know, that's a different question. And one of the things I often wonder and even talk about with people is, if you think you're averse to Judaism, are you averse to what's actually happening? Are you averse to what Judaism actually is and can be? Or are you averse to some image of Judaism, of Jewish community, of synagogue that you have in your head that isn't actually accurate based on what's actually happening and what the possibilities actually are? Often, I think, when people are averse, they're averse to an image that they have and not necessarily averse to what's actually happening. So then it's a process of saying, you know, "I hear that you really have no interest in Jewish community. Tell me why. I hear that you don't ever want to step foot in the synagogue. Tell me about that. Why?" And to hear that reason, and then to address, you know, if there is a disconnect between what they think and what's actually happening, right? To address that gap and to say, you know, well, "I think that your image is not one that we have here, and would you give us a second chance? I think we can offer you something you need."
Could you share with us what prompted you to pursue rabbinic study?
Sure. I grew up in a very small Jewish community. And so kind of from as soon as the minute I was bat mitzvahed, I was involved in leading services and teaching in the Hebrew school and reading Torah, because that's what everyone did. You know, we actually didn't have a rabbi, let alone a cantor, right after I was bat mitzvahed for a couple of years. And I loved it, I enjoyed it. And I felt like it was kind of an extracurricular activity in my life. It wasn't what I wanted to be the focus of my life. So I went to college. I started out, not at Syracuse University, but at a small liberal arts college called Wagner College on Staten Island. And there's no Jewish community there. And the Jewish community on Staten Island is not one that I would fit into. And I realized how much I missed it. And I realized how much being involved in Judaism was really important to my life and my identity. I realized how much being involved in Jewish community and communal work was really a part of my life and my identity. And so that really set off a whole shift of course of events. I transferred schools. Syracuse has a much better Jewish community, a much larger, actually, has a Jewish studies program, let alone a large one. So I transferred schools. I actually went to Israel in between. There was a bit of a question at first in my mind of cantor rabbi, because I was a music student at the time. And when you're a music student who wants to do Jewish, you become a cantor, right? That's just what happens. But I found myself really falling in love with the teaching, with the text study, with aspects of the job that are broader than what kind of your typical cantorial job is, that I wanted to be just as involved, if not more involved, in the teaching, in the pastoral care, in the study, as I did in the musical life of Judaism. And so that was what prompted me to go to rabbinical school. I was heavily influenced by my leadership work at Hillel at Syracuse University, and very, very influenced by my year at the conservative yeshiva. I studied there between college and rabbinical school. So at that time, I had kind of already made the decision to go to rabbinical school. But that year really deepened and affirmed my choice. And that was really the year. I had never studied Talmud before, and that was the year that I fell in love with text study and knew that that was going to be a very big part of my identity.
This community has a large contingent that is conservative, a large contingent that is Orthodox, and a large that's Reform. Could you speak a little bit to your experience in working with Jews this way? Or your attitudes, or any of your thoughts about that? Sometimes we get along, sometimes not. There's some interaction, some avoidance, et cetera.
Sure. So this is pretty much everywhere. The work that I've done in Hillel, I think, has especially prepared me for working with different denominations, because of course, Hillel is not denominationally affiliated. So not only as a student was I involved in Hillel, but I also have an internship at Rutgers University for a year at the Hillel there. And you really are working with all different types of Jews, not just Reform and Orthodox, but also secular and humanist, and, you know, the whole swath of Jewish identity. So I certainly have experience with it. And I think, you know, the key is that... I forget the exact words you used, but there are opportunities for collaboration, and there are times when it's important to do our own thing. I very firmly believe in being very proud of who we are as conservative Jews, having a strong identity of what that means to be a conservative Jew. And by that, I mean, you know, not to think of ourselves as not Reform and not Orthodox, right? Because that's a negative definition. That says who we're not, that doesn't say who we are. And I think it's very important to say who we are, that we are... In my mind, we are the closest expression of God's will that we have in Judaism, that we equally recognize the importance of tradition, of ritual, of the sanctity of every single human being, regardless of gender, regardless of any other identifying factor. regardless of gender, regardless of any other identifying factor, and that we recognize that tradition and law and ritual have always been changing, right? And that we are still just continuing that process of adapting to our current surroundings. So I think it's important to have that sense of self individually and communally, but also to have a very strong sense of, the rabbinic concept, "Kol Yisrael are vinn zaba za." All of Israel is mixed up, intertwined, and there are opportunities for collaboration, just as there are opportunities for asserting our own unique type of Judaism. You have no other questions for me? I find that very good.
We've learned every single thing possible about you.
That is not true.
Well, I'll ask you a question, which you, which I've asked you before, so this is like a softball. Before you had a one-year-old, even maybe before you got married, before you found a love for Talmud, other than all of those Jewish things, what do you like to do for fun?
Sure. So I love board games, European board games, like Setters of Catan, Ticket to Ride, games like that. If you don't know and you're interested, I'm always happy to teach people. But that's something that we do especially on Shabbat afternoons, a great Shabbat afternoon activity. I do Bikram yoga, which is hot yoga. I find that very centering and empowering. And I love a good conversation and a good cup of coffee, I love some trashy TV, you know? The things that most people enjoy, I think. That was great!
By the time I get to him, my father-in-law will make up a question.
So Rabbi, I think if you live around this room, you've found that people who are committed, you don't have to sell us anything. It's really my grandkids and my children who, if you, if I don't even interview them, they all say, I'm Jewish, right? But the question of really what the essence of being Jewish is, is way beyond alif-based davening. And my personal story would be, I didn't really feel like I was Jewish until I was 50. But, and it's not about the davening, it's really about the community, and every time I leave here, I leave with a nubbet, which brings me back to center, right? So Rabbi Star is phenomenal, and I listen to him in heavenly, so I can take that into the world, beyond the Jewish world, because I want to act like the right person in every place I go. It's inspired from him, about the Torah, and everybody else. But I think engaging with, inviting the Talmud for Shabbat is a great thing, except you're only one person. So for us as a community to do this, we all who are sitting here need to say, this all outreach, so it needs to be like a strategy that we have. Because I'm certain of the future of famous life, though, in 30 years, when people who are sitting here are here, you know, will my kids be as obligated, or my grandkids? And I would pray and hope so. I would think that at the seminary, you talked about these, how the process of engaging people into the spirit of Judaism, added to the alif-based davening.
Absolutely.
Maybe you have a comment?
Okay, I was gonna say, is there a specific question, or do you want me to respond?
I didn't hear about how much you're behaving and how you engage around Soviet people.
Sure. So a few different ways I could answer your question, because it was a very broad question. You know, reaching out one-on-one to people and hearing what they're interested in, that's just the first step. So, and that's the first step in two different ways. I'm a very big believer in the model of community organizing, then, and that idea of one-on-one outreach is really based in that. But the model of community organizing doesn't start there, right? You have, I would have, let's say, 50 coffee dates, right? And out of those 50 coffee dates, I can isolate seven, 10 people who can then become leaders in helping to reach out to the rest of the community. And the key there is to find the people who are not already involved leaders in the community. Because, you know, by bringing in someone that's new, you're getting another person involved in the leadership of the community, and they're the kind of person who can reach the people who aren't already coming, because it's that group that you want to reach, as you said. So it is a process of, you know, first meet one-on-one with a core group of people, then have them also meet one-on-one, start having living room conversations, grow and grow, and then that does influence what happens in the synagogue, the kinds of programming that happens in the synagogue, the way it's done. And your point about, about not just being alif bet is essential. Right? What we have to offer is depth and meaning. I very much believe that. What Judaism has to offer in a world of quick and easy soundbites is depth and meaning that can really enrich our lives in a way that nothing else can. And so it is, how do you get that across? And one of the reasons I love text study so much is that that is one of the ways we can get it across. But not for everyone, it's not going to speak to everyone. And so I think especially a synagogue as large as this is in a unique position to really offer a wide range of programming, right? So that for some people, it will be the Saturday morning service that they come to that really speaks to them. For some people, it will be the text study, and they don't come on Saturday mornings. For some people, it's going to be a social justice initiative, and they're never going to come for a text study or Shabbat morning, right? But you have the ability to offer a wide range of programming that meets a wide range of needs. And I think that that is very much tied up in who we are as Jews. You know, we have 613 meets vote, because not all of them are going to speak to everyone, right? And so too with the synagogue, we should have a wide range of programs, a wide range of opportunities to be involved, because not everything is going to speak to everyone, but something will.
Just gonna change, change direction for just the last couple minutes that we have. Is there anybody who'd like to share with Rabbi Sarah, why it is, to give her a feeling of why it is you are happy to be here, glad to be in this room, glad to be a member of the shul, to encourage her to understand why so many people care about this synagogue? Anybody want to share that? Sure, that'd be great.
My husband and I joined congregation chair at Seti about nine or 10 years ago. What we liked about it is that a friend of mine from, that I'd known a long time ago, when she saw me there, she was so warm and friendly. I think it's a personal contact, is that, she and her husband had been members here for many years, and she just introduced us to people, and just made us feel comfortable. And the luncheons that they had afterwards, it's like a bonus, you know? It's like people get to sit down and talk. There's a very warm feeling here that you don't, I don't think that, maybe don't get somewhere else, but there's a chance to sit down and talk and argue and discuss things that, you know, but it's in a, in a good way, you know? And to me, Rabbi Star's sermons, when I leave here, I say, what did I take with me? And I always take something wonderful with me, because, you know, they have, it's like here, it's like, I want to be a better person, I want to be a good Jew. And I was not raised a conservative group, I would say our family was more Reform, but there's a lot more depth here. And when I listen to Rabbi Star, and I feel, you know, I always take something important away with me, and I try to live my life that way. And, you know, when you see other people around you who are not as committed, you say, that's what I don't want to do. You know, that's what I don't want to do. I don't want to gas up, I don't, there's certain things I don't want to do. And if I didn't come here, I wouldn't have all of this to guide me during the week and to, to make me feel like, makes me feel good about myself when I feel like I'm doing the right thing.
We planted her to say that. It's now two o'clock, I really appreciate everyone's being here. Please, before you get up, Karen and I have an email address, cszrabbiessurge@gmail.com, where we're hoping that members of the congregation will send us their impressions for our larger community and for the board of trustees. Please send those to us, because we always want to hear what everybody has to say, not only about Rabbi Sarah, but if we didn't have other, if we had another person here once. Did you ever, did you ever know that guy?
One or two classes.
He said he knew you.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not a secret, this is a process, so please be involved in it. And thank you very much for being here today at Shabbat Cholo.
Shabbat Cholo.